Good evening, everybody. We're ready to get started in a minute or so. Good evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome you to our town hall meeting. Basically, to discuss drainage and where we're at, and certainly open to other topics that we're interested in. We appreciate you taking time out of your valuable time out of your evening to come sit and listen to us. I'd like to do a couple introductions. Tonight, we have Councilmember Hank Doogie. He's in the back standing up. Councilmember Greg DePong. Councilmember Larry Milliken. Councilmember-elect Andy Mann. Back, my right, back right. And then with city staff, we've got a whole complement. We have Assistant City Manager Bob Bass. Assistant City Manager Mike Tramm. The Director of Engineering Chris Sims. The Chief Peter Ratliff. Department Director Jody Hook. Director of Finance Lena Fortis. Director of Budget and Project Management Anthony Steelman. Director of Planning David Futter. Director of Parks and Cultural Services Chin Wei. Director of Information Technology and Facilities Brian Smith. Director of Communications and Media Relations Jared Burrowsmore. Director of Human Resources Janet Shirley. City Attorney Adam Dunn. City Secretary Diana Stafford. Fire Marshal Tommy Collins. Internal Auditor Ronald Lee. Senior Drain Engineer Jack Murphy. County City Manager John Baumgartner. We're going to be reacting to the presentation. I think it's 20 or 30 minutes. Bob Bass will give answers. Go ahead.
Good evening. Thank you for coming. Let's start off by saying that the single most important thing you need to do tonight is give us your comments and questions. They could be either by coming in and appreciating your line and getting a line. For whatever reason, if for whatever reason you can't make your way to the... I'm running too loud. If for some reason you can't make your way to the line, a lot of our staffers somewhere has a hand on the mic. And they'll be watching for your hands go up and they'll bring you a mic. So whatever it takes. If you have to come up here, get the mic, stand up and make your way, whatever it takes. We really want you to... because that's why you're here. And that's why we're here too. Mechanics in the meeting. There's a sign-in sheet. I hope that everyone signed up. If you feel like you want to sign up, you know, in fact, that can make you. But it's important that you follow up on minutes and those kinds of things to give you additional information as we discover and come upon. There are comment cards, as I understand it. Your comment cards can be collected. If you hold your hand up, that staff running around here will pick them up. The panel group will look at them. We can address them later. Our friends will come over and agree on the comment card. But that's helpful too, because what will do is an after action. We'll go back and we'll go through the video. We'll go through all the notes we're going to take in the comment cards. And we'll address everything we possibly can. Is that something about the microphones? There's refreshments back over there. I think there's cookies and things like that, water. Adapt yourself up at the facilities. Other facilities are outside. You're allowed as you may. So just feel at home, please. Okay? We're just going to talk for a while. I'm going to give a somewhat brief presentation to kind of set the stage. Attempting really to, in a nutshell, to do three things. I'm an agie, so if I say three, you know that they're not... they're not against me. But we're going to do three things in a nutshell. We're going to tell you what we've done. We're going to tell you where we are. And we're going to tell you what we think we need to keep moving forward. And that's the key right there. Because we really have done a lot more than we may be aware of. And we have a better feel for what's necessary mechanically, physically, engineering-wise, improvement-wise than you may know it. Except for those of you that are very actively involved. We appreciate that. But the reality is, just to point out real thing, you know what to do. You've got to figure out how to do it. And it's largely a funding issue. And it's a support issue. So just be prepared then. Now, before I start, we go into some of the basics and afterthought. I'd like to start off and kind of set the tone of us, the community. We, the people here, the people at home, the people that aren't here, that would like to be here. And kind of give you a feel for what we are, who we are as a community. Well, we're a city of 105,000 souls, plus our Miami's depending on what's going on at this very moment. We are the... we're the fourth largest city in the Houston region. We're the third, if you take out Flippins, because Flippins is kind of a weird thing. But it is with the traditional cities. We're the third biggest city in the Houston region. That is, we're a player. We're a player city in this region. People look to us for examples of what to do. And hopefully not what not to do, serve what to do. We're a city of importance. Again, if we're looked up, if we're the single largest city in Dallas County. And so I don't want you to take, you know, the blue side of the flag. Even though we're focused on this as our home town, we are, and can set a strong example for the region. Especially in the county of the drainage, because it's a problem that's all shared. The city is 53 square miles in area, per diem. It is kind of a linear shape, as I've described before, which is not the most efficient way to provide services. Because you have to split services across a long distance, but forget it. The adopted fiscal year 19 operating budget is $113 million. You know what? I've got slides. Thank you. Is $131 million. Operating budget is paperclips of fuel and landlords and police officers and city engineers and everything it takes to make the city around is $131 million. The FY19 capital budget is $76 million, as approved by the city council as of today, or today, today. That $76 million is capital projects. It's water plant expansion, anticipation of raw water lines from the water service to maintain the pressures and to address future growth. It's also streets. It's some drainage. It's all kinds of capital structures of various kinds. We have 90 miles of sewer force mains, 90 miles. You can come far from it. You took them out of the ground, laid them in the end, how far do you get from Lake City following 90 miles of pipe? Well, we have 354 miles of water lines. We have 492 miles, excuse me, 354 miles of drainage sewers. We have 492 miles of water lines. We have 279 miles of concrete roads, 71 miles of asphalt roads, 270 miles of storm sewer pipes, 133 miles of roadside ditches, which I call bar ditch, or bar ditches. But they're an effective part of the drainage facility system. And we have 40 miles or sloped miles of major outfalls. Those are the raddest ditches, the dents and the gullies and those kinds of things. All of those have to be maintained on a more regular basis. Otherwise, transportation issues occur and, by the way, drainage issues. Think about it. Underground, there's over 1,200 miles of pipes. Of that, there's about 423 miles of the piping systems for facilities, for drains facilities, as well as additional infrastructure, and 369 miles of road. So for every mile of road you see when you leave here tonight, there's three more miles of stuff underground that make the city, that make the water come out of the tap or hopefully make the drainage water go away and not let any street or floodwater come. To kind of put it in perspective too, it's my chief developer, Chris Sims, our Director of Engineering told me yesterday that based on recent projects, developers are spending... developers, not us, not citizens, but developers are spending about $2.3 million per lane mile. And of that, about 34% of it is drainage. Drainage is a huge part of road construction. Because roads were designed to carry two things: cars and water. It's either a bar ditches or it's in the curb and gutter. And so cars and drainage and transportation and drainage and streets and drainage will hand and hand all the time. The public works budget is maintained by Jody Hooks, our Public Works Director. When you combine streets, traffic and drainage together, drainage is one full third of the cost. So it's extremely expensive. I used to work for an engineering firm a million years ago, a long time ago. And the fellow that I worked with always used to tell me that drainage is like burying Cadillacs end-to-end underground. Because it's so expensive, but it's also so important. Because it keeps our homes dry if it's properly functioned. It keeps our streets passed if it's properly functioning. Little theory is right with, municipal infrastructure systems are large in scale. It covers 53 square, almost 53 square miles. It's not all developed. It's interconnected. It is a complex system. I mean, the balancing of the pressures from the places close to the water towers all the way down to the lowest house in the lowest part of the system. It's demanding in terms of time and money due to 3 billion miles, as example, for our sector. And it's regionally interconnected. You know, a large, poor, raw water supply doesn't start here in Lake City. It comes from other places. So we're connected from a water perspective. Every drop of water that gets past your house goes somewhere downstream. If it falls south of the line, that basically bisects the city. It goes to Dickenson Bay. If it falls north of the land, it goes basically to Clear Creek. So the reality is that we're not in the vacuum. You know, our infrastructure's not in the vacuum. And the impacts in the suburb are not in the vacuum, because hardly hurt everybody. Some people far more than others. You know, and they've got a lot worse stories than I could ever tell personally. What have we done? What have we been doing? You know, city drainage, wait, wait, today, had included to be modified and signed standards for new development. And those of you that are existing in the existing subdivision say, "That's great." But remember, there's a substantial portion of the city that's going to have houses eventually too. So we don't want to put them in the same position that any founder says. And so we've upgraded the standards, as the City Council members, the local staff, to do it, based on calculations. We've also continued maintaining our existing infrastructure, all those bar ditches and those detention pond basins and those kinds of things, plus increased and enhanced our mowing schedules in terms of keeping those things clean. Or desilting. Because what happens over time is all the silt runs off, you know, settles out into the flow lines and these ditches and brick creeks and bios and things. And it ends up with additional cross-section, therefore carries less water. Or more importantly, water has to carry that isn't in the ditch, it's outside the ditch where we're all living, where we have all of our stuff. Number three, we've been working on a series of drainage studies. They've all been patiently, you know, suffering along with us as we've gone through it. But those studies were initiated by the City Council, by the City Manager, almost immediately after Harvey just took time. And for six studies, many of you that participated in public meetings focused on those drainage areas, many of you have had individual contact with us on those drainage areas. And that's welcome. And I would ask you to keep adding. Purpose of those studies was not to fix all our problems. Because don't know the money in the world to do that, especially when you talk about fixing Dickenson in the world properly, but not in Lake City. To fix Dickenson and to fix Clear Creek. But the reality is, we're trying to harden it. If we have an event that even approaches Harvey, we want to do the best we possibly can to mitigate the impact and reduce it as much as possible based on engineering and funding. You know, those things are at hand. And the last regional approach is, the City Council just recently directed the City Manager to say, "Hey, if no one, if groups aren't standing up, let's leave cities stand up officially." Because you've got three counties. I don't have any cities. I didn't even try to count. School districts, you've got water districts, and you've got some science districts. All of these elements of jurisdictional governments that have to come together that exist in the Clear Creek watershed, or exist in the Dickenson watershed. And no one group, I would suggest, no one group has the power or the funding. And maybe not even the, maybe will fix the problems for everybody. So we're going to have to come together in some form or fashion. And that's why council directed the City Manager to start that effort, which in fact he has. And I've described that in a few moments. So I'm going to hit these four things here just briefly and keep rolling. Modified design standards for new development, lower allowable street pounding. For decades and decades, quite frankly, after talking to Mr. Acoff, I believe, hopes of Clear Creek in certain phases were built back on the standard set. And let me just say this. I'm not going to sit there and talk about the facts. Because they were smart then, and they're smart now. Those people after us, they're even smarter than we are. Just the way it is, okay? When the standard in the city of Lake City was that it was okay if we mixed up with 24 inches of water standing in your street, that was based on good and customary engineering practice at the time. So a large portion, existing portions of the city of Lake City were hooked on that 24-inch standard. Sometime, best we could tell, late '90s, early 2000s, the City Council directed staff to do step from 24 inches to 18 inches. Well, you know, I don't know what you drive, but 18 inches can still put water in a car if you've got a park near the curb. The City Council, based on the impact of Harvey and the studies and all of the input, you know, from the citizens, directed staff to look at that even further. So in June this year, that standard's been reduced to nine inches. So that's for new development. So for new development, they're going to have to design piping systems underground. Inlets are going to have to properly size, detention retention systems, transfer pipes, downstream effects. Everything will not allow any more than nine inches to pond in a street for a 100-year event. Those of you that were designed back in the 18 and 24-inch days, your systems are set. But the six studies that we worked on showed us potential solutions based on funding to address those issues. Another area that council directed staff to do has been adopted as a June of 2018 for new development, is detention. You drive through the city, you cannot hardly miss the detention ponds, either dry or wet. And they're designed to hold water at a certain rate and meter it out, or at least at a certain rates but doesn't cause downstream impacts. Or they're designed to retain it, you know, for the longest period in time, it'd be almost like a water feature. The standards for Lake City for a long time, again, based on good customer engineering practice at the time, was that when a developer came in and they calculated how much runoff they would have based on the design storm, certain inches per hour, and how much road surface and street coverage and house coverage and impervious surface that water could go through. They would design, and they would say, "Well, the volume of our detention pond needs to be this." And it would be designed to hold a 100-year runoff. Well, the standards have for the longest time, in addition to that, they have to build 12 inches more. More, what they call freeboard or buffer. So the standards of the ones you see now are designed to hold a hundred, based on the hundred standard at that time, and additional 12 inches to freeboard. Council in the June update to our design standard changed that to two feet. So now it's 24 inches. So any detention pond is designed to, number one, address the, contain at least the volume of the 100 here plus two additional feet of freeboard. In addition, we're a brand-new standard for Lake City. Engineers, when they're designing those same set detention ponds, have to model, model through the map on the 500-year event. And so, let's say, let me do the best I can. Let's say that this is the level of the water. Let's say this is the detention area. This is the level of water. And that's at a 100-year event that they calculated. They got to go two feet above that. Now, when they model the 500, if the 500 comes below that 200, they're happy campers and nothing else is necessary. But if that 500 gets calculated above that 24 inches, they have to further increase the volume in the detention pond to meet the 500 plus three additional inch of cover. I don't know that anybody has that standard right now. Menace if we do this here. I could be wrong. But that is a substantial increase in terms of volume for new development. Finish floor elevations. Finish floor elevations, is that your first floor that you're walking on? Did you got carpet or what do you have on it? That's the house that the board 40 live on. Standards for a large number of years were 18 inches. Finish floor had to be 18 inches above the crown of the road's crown. So the top of the road had to be 18 inches above the crown, or 18 inches above the highest point of elevation on the side, or 18 inches above the 100-year floodplain. Council in that June amendment changed that from 18 to 24 inches. So now all the finished floors have to be another, what's that, 3 inches? Thank you. Six inches, six inches above our current standard. In addition, and I'm really trying to emphasize this, because this is really big stuff as far as new development goes. Because we don't want to, we don't want to do, we don't want to happen to us what happened again. We possibly mitigate with the Harvey. And in addition, that same 500-year modeling requirements on listed offers as well. So they designed the finish floor elevation 24 inches above, let's pick the 100 as an example. They calculate the 500. If it comes in between the 100 and additional 24 inches, great, no more addition. If it comes in above the 24, then they've got to raise that slab up, or raise that pile up. Whatever it takes, they got to raise the bar for the house that you live on, at least to the 500-year event plus three more inches if we feel like that's going to take us a long way in the future in terms of standards. Those are the things that council directed staff to do, that we have known that right now that every new development project is in the process of coming down for time. One thing that we're working on, it wasn't council-directed, because this is coming from the feds. Okay? And I'm in the government. I could talk to the feds, you know, like, yeah, it's a great sort of bureaucrat, talking about bureaucrats. But the feds, FEMA, the Federal Emergency Management Administration, manages a process of a program you probably know about, called the National Flood Insurance Program. And it has the community rating system. Those of you that have a structured commercial business or any, or a home, with a 100-year floodplain is currently designated on that map on the way toward our end over there. And I'll show you in a second. I didn't miss it. Show you in a second. But if they're there, you get a 20% discount on your flood insurance, because the current system in place. Well, FEMA is updating those maps. And I'm going to show them. I jump ahead. That's the current flood zone map of the city of Lake City. The dark blue is the 100-year event zones. The light blue is the 500. What we've been shown, proposed for the future is that. Okay? Yeah, really. 50%, 30%, I don't know. But it's going to be something we're going to have to deal with. And so there are going to be more and more structures that currently are not 100, that are going to be in the hundreds. The reality is that we have to accept that map. If we, as a community, still want to participate in the National Flood Insurance Program and get discounts of any kind whatsoever. That map is all, both those maps are right there on the easel. And so anytime during the meeting or afternoon, we'll check it out. About the staff member, we'd be happy to look at it with you. And we can, you know, post this on the website and download it in more detail. The second part, I'm going to go back. The second part is not only the FEMA, but NOAA, National Oceanic Association, Spirit Association, I believe it is. They are the ones that designate what the storm intensities are, the standard storms. Right now, the NOAA standard for a one inch for a 100-year event is 4.6 inches of rain in one hour. They're going to, proposing to go to 5.3 inches in one hour. That's a 15% increase in the design standard. So what does that mean? That means everything that's got them talking to you about, about how high the 100 is, how high the 500 is, is going to change. It's going to get even higher over time, because again, the design storms are different. The pipes underground are going to be larger. The indoor boxes are going to be larger. The tension's going to have to have greater volume. So it's going to, to some degree, change, without question, change the way we do business as far as development goes. The other standard that they set, currently they have a 24-hour standard of 13.5 inches per, in a 24-hour period. Their proposed standard is 18 inches within a 24-hour period. That's a 33% increase. We can deal with it. We'll make it happen. We'll make the standards happen. But it may change, again, the way you do business a little bit in the development world here in Lake City. But maybe that happens, okay? Again, standards change. 24 inches two decades ago was a wonderful number. Nine inches better now. And those are the, that's the current flood zones. That's the proposed FEMA flood zones. Oh, please, yes.
So you see a big change, see a big change in the proposed flood zones? You know, people say, "Well, what's the change?" And it's not been the 13 inches versus 18 inches. What drove the change in the flood zones was storm surge combined with rain surge. And so what you see where the 100-year floodplain has increased the most is the Long Clear Lake, the Long Dickson Bay, the Long Clear Creek, the areas that are affected by storm surge. And we just wanted to know that.
Surge and surge coming in from the Gulf and Bay and riverine coming, you know, rainfall coming down through the creeks and the bios. The second thing, the four things we've been working on, is maintenance of existing infrastructure. Our mowing goals, and I'll be the first one to tell you that we don't always need them, between raining and other assignments and just stuff happens. What can I say? But we do our best to stay on top of it. But these are our, these are our existing, as well as we've got some enhanced standards we're working on. We, of the 133 miles of bar ditches, or bar ditches I talked to you about, we actually maintain about 50. The rest of them remain by homeowners, are maintained by homeowners or business owners, et cetera. We attempt to mow those nine times a year as our standard. 40 miles that major outfall ditches, we try to maintain those four or six times a year. Detention pond bottoms, four times a year. Outfall flow lines, four times per year. General maintenance also is part of maintenance program that Jody Hooks and his crew is doing with 270 miles of storm sewer. What do they do? They camera. There was some camera going on here in Bay Ridge, I believe, because of some reported, you know, issues relative to construction that was thought to be in insurance otherwise, and some roots and things. So his crew uses a footage of the camera of these lines, as well as they send personnel flashlights in the manholes, into the system, and they check it out visually. What they're looking for is root penetration. Sometimes the joints fall apart, sometimes. Hydraulically, roots are standing as strong. They can really push the concrete around and push joints apart. But root cutting, we also look for debris and blockage, especially after Harvey. There's all kinds of stuff that went down in the storm drain system. And of course, repair and replacement is part of their program. The third thing we've been working on is the drainage study program. This is, I have, I have a link on this in terms of technical details. Those are for meetings that follow this, and meetings that have been held, and we'll keep talking one-on-one. These are the six basic areas that were studied since shortly after Harvey. There are 26 projects that have been identified as a direct result of these studies. Estimated dollars are about $120 million to do all the work. Does all the work need to be done? Yeah, we suggest it does. You know, should certain projects lead to others? Yeah, maybe, based on prioritization, and we'll talk about it here in just a second. The point is, that's $120 million for the 26 projects that were generated by the six study areas. That doesn't address the creek. And it doesn't address Dickenson Bay. It's just, it addresses the areas within the center part of the city. I'll ask you to think back to one of the first slides I think we looked at. The entire operations budget was $131 million. That's $120 million. The entire capital improvements budget was $76 million. That's $120 million. And we got to find it somewhere. And, you know, could you come in and move stuff around? Yeah, you could, but not any substantial degree of harm levels of service or substantially. But that's, of course, my opinion with the City Manager. He should have said so. I'm not in trouble. Yeah. The next grant applications, these 26 grants, or 26 projects, I apologize. There are three basic grants that we're going for. The first one is the Texas Hazard Mitigation Grant Program. That is the billion with a B dollar money, as you heard by Dr. Harvey, that got sent down here that everybody's competing like crazy for. And we're right up there with them, just as aggressively about it. We're submitting all of our $120 million of the projects to that program. I'm going to tell you right now, I said it right there. Competitive based on cost benefit. We'll sit here and tell you that of those 26 studies and the six areas, all of them need to be addressed to some degree. Because they showed deficiencies and they showed opportunities. The feds will very likely not approve of that. The feds have a different kind of process for determining whether or not a project, even if it's locally important, rises to the level to meet the threshold in order to gain enough points to be scored. We are holding our breath and knocking on wood to get about $20 million worth. If we get 40, it's great. If we get 60, Giants taking us all, the manager's taking us all out for burgers or something like that. But I'm definitely quiet. It's just that I want you to understand, there's no way, even with a billion dollars of grants, we're not qualified for all the $120 million. It's not going to do it. So again, there's stuff, there are gaps in there that have to be filled somehow. I want to point out that these grants, the Texas Hazard Mitigation, they're 75% money from the states and the feds for the grant program and a 25% local match. So, you know, we've got to go up to some match muddies as well. The CDVG, this is money we have at hand. We were allocated based on our CDVG program, relationship with the government, and our, just our allocations based on the size of the city. We have 6.8 millions awarded to us. If I say million, that's what it should say, $6.8 million. We can use that 6.8 as some of that 25% match on the ones that we get. We can use that 6.8 then to buy down certain of that $120 million that we don't get money at all for. There are certain projects, quite frankly, which is the ones that... That area, the Landing West of Oaks area, it looks like the overall project fix is around a million dollars. Quite frankly, maybe we're taking a million out of that 6.8, not the hassle with all of the red tape associated with the federal program. And it's not that the paperwork is a problem. It is, it's the time. And, you know, there's a sense of urgency here. So we may buy that program down. There's a variety of different combinations of things we're trying. When you see 26, okay, and the last one I'm sorry, is the Texas Water Development Board. We are highly eligible. We are confident we're going to get this one. We're confident we're going to get this one. This is for a citywide 2D modeling program. What that does is that allows us to go through and run models of the entire 53 square miles and run it down 100-year event scenario, 500-year event scenario, et cetera, et cetera. And it will calculate the inundation patterns. So if someone asks us the question, "Hey, what might it cost to harden the entire city?" So if someone asks us the question, hey, what might it cost to harden the entire city for the 500-year event, right now we'd say, we don't have to do it because we've been focused on 100-year events. But with this modeling program, we can go there and we can restart the process intelligently and repeat the results to come up with a real number to say, hey, this is what we're looking at. So, in the bottom line, we're pursuing the grants as hard as we possibly can and they're competitive, but we are not giving up, we're not going to, we're not going to slow down. Regional approach is the last of the four things we've been doing. There are two watershed steering committees. There's a member or two out here, I've seen some, a couple council members that are also members of that, extremely active, with great leadership. They're honorable and an excellent example of unity on a global or a regional issue. Clear Creek focused on Clear Creek, Dickinson focused on Dickinson because they're two huge problems. We want to keep partnering with them, supporting them as best we can. Galveston County has conducted a series of projects to date that have added great value, like in the Bay Ridge area as an example, I'll tell you why. The Gunbottle Clearing Project, which was south of our city, if you're on 646 and see where Gunbottle Crosses, if you could look over high enough, you could see that the county came in, widened the cross section, cleared it out for a number of miles, I don't have any. What that does, and in addition, they also down in that area, partly in our corporate limits and partly in the, I guess, the EDJ on that end, maybe some of Dickinson, they created a very large detention pump. Something that Bay Ridge deals with is that they've got a system that should rain into the detention pump they have, and it should by, by that variable, variable of atmospheric pressure flow into Gump Island. But if the water came to get down to Dickinson and it's a point of constriction, there's something called a tailwater effect, meaning the water piles up on itself and backs up. So all the pump sections and all of the fixes for Bay Ridge as an example are not going to be affected if in fact we can't get water down Gump Island. Those two improvements are going to do a lot to help us out in that regard. And that same amount, quite frankly, can be utilized with those that cleared in terms of the detention pump south of 96 and any of those areas that was hit, the land is available to again reduce tailwater impact and water forcing its way back or in either of down the screen. Harris County, most of it, if you're aware, if you're not, there's roughly $290 million of work going on on the upper reaches of Clear Creek. It's outside of our, our area jurisdiction. They're doing on-system, meaning on the main stem, detention to add volume and produce flows. They're doing off-system detention, the new on-mound things up there that, quite frankly, may be a good model for us. As I understand it, manager Bongard helped me out, as I understand it, the objective is, the model indicates it will reduce the surface water of a section of Clear Creek by a few inches. Well, a few inches is better than no inches, but it isn't enough, okay? But if, if, if people are concerned that what's going on upstream, is this going to make it come to us a lot faster like Navy, Sister City, Lars, if there's a concern like that, that's not what the intention is and that's not what the math indicates, just to take that straight up. City's leadership role very proud about this. Again, manager Bongard, we're a single team. We've already started talking to some engineering consultants that are experts in the area of building consensus and bringing the areas together, huge scale engineering projects. There is $500,000 in the budget right now that can be used as team money to start some of the coalition building and some of the project concepts, both Clear Creek watershed and Dickinson watershed. So there's, there's money in the bank right now, maybe some additional monies depending on how they're redirected, but just because we're focused on $120 million and these 26 projects, doesn't mean we're not also very concerned about peace of mind for those people that live on Clear Creek and on Dickinson Bay. The city's leadership role will basically take the form of six different things. It'll be coalition building. Again, remember I mentioned all those jurisdictions have got to come together because no one, probably has enough money or political will front the money for everyone else, it's a, it's a coalition. Project development, what is it? Is it straightening? Is it dredging? Is it de-snagging? Is it a tunnel? Who knows? I don't know what it is, we just have to start the process. Once projects have been developed, there's a consensus among the various jurisdictions, then we need to create an education and marketing program for the citizens because it's you and me, or these guys, that are going to ask to float bonds probably or pursue federal monies to the tune of hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of millions of dollars for the funding for the project. Next is technical design, that's part of the overall approach. And of course, the most important part number six is action and implementation. And that's what the city's leadership role is intended to be, working hands-in-hand with Commissioner Clark and Appeld and the county and many, many others. All right, project categorization, categorization, excuse me. Right off the bat, and that falls into two categories. If your house or your business got flooded, that's important. And that's probably in the greater scheme is more important than if a soccer field got flooded or a parking lot got flooded or even a street got flooded. And then that gets kind of dicey in terms of the priorities. But generally speaking, the projects are prepared, presented to a bucket that has structural, business and homes, and then non-structural, which is sites and those kinds of things. It doesn't stop there. As you can well imagine, there's additional project prioritization. Again, initial categories, the two groups, structural, non-structural, then we start breaking it down. Now, this lists the enabling factors or the factors that help the projects score higher or rise higher in the priority system in terms of when it's going to get done and what parts get done. It's not a comprehensive list, there are many more factors involved, and I didn't want to have multiple slides. And when he says something else too, it's very important, that's not a rank order, that's a random order, okay? So don't think that we start with one and go to the next, it's a combination, it's an intricate process. So like his example, frequency and impact. If you have 100 homes that are flooding, you know, have structural flooding three times in three years, that's something we need to get on. Same 100 homes elsewhere, they flood, you know, structurally, maybe every 25 years or 30 years, I mean, you see what I'm saying? There's kind of a balancing effort that goes into that. And so all of these factors plus others help ultimately the staff put together a list that will shoot to the decision makers in terms of where we get it. Leveraging the funds. Projects 100, let's say it's a $40 million project and we give $30 million in grants, or we have a $30 million project and we don't get anything for. Timing wise, we might lean towards where the grant money is so we can financially leverage, you know, what we have and these others. And health safety, okay? Another example would be, let's say your house doesn't flood, but your street is flooded so frequently that you're missing water, you know, or you can't get your kids, or an ambulance can't come down and take you to the hospital, you know, that's unacceptable. And, you know, may not be in the greater scheme of things as, as higher priority as a structure flooding, but it's certainly something we're not going to turn our backs on. And we as a community should turn, in my opinion, should, should turn our backs on that as well. Project prioritization, these are the limiting factors. There are certain factors that quite frankly drive a project, you know, not now, but place it lower. And again, like I said, 100 homes that only flooded every 25 or 30 years based on odd events would have a lower, have a higher limiting factor. Community consensus, the city manager Bongard has said a bunch of times, we build, we attempt to build the projects that the people want. And that doesn't mean necessarily everybody needs to surrender, and that's what we focus on. So projects that receive support, they're going to ring high. Projects that people come out and say they're opposed to, for whatever reason, legitimate, passionate, who cares, they're going to be more complicated in that regard. Negative impacts on inter-jurisdictional, inter-jurisdictional relationships, you know? It's not at some level fair to dump water at high velocity, great volume on somebody downstream, and it's not legal either. So there are legitimate reasons to think about in terms of potential litigation, not to mention other reasons. So we have to be careful. You don't want anybody dumping high velocity volume on us, and the same should be held for anybody south downstream of us because for the most part, we're downstream of some of it. Most people are. Funding methods? Funding methods? There are no funding methods. No, funding methods, the first one, is stiffest obligation. The city currently uses those and they're used primarily to search for the capital improvements program. Stiffest obligation do not require a vote of the people. The city council can choose to implement those. It's done in the city of Lake City in a way that the people have input because it's the capital improvements program. So it's vetted in public carries, it's vetted in council questions and reviews, so it's a highly vetted process. So it's not as if it's a process like it's debt is issued for long, just in terms of time without input. It has grants, we've already talked about, we're going after those as hard as we possibly can. Capital improvement program, I already mentioned that, $76 million for this year, we have $120 million in need. We can't just stop going water, road and other projects to be drained, so we've got to, we've got to find alternatives. Here's one that hadn't, that's been talked about for a while, but maybe we'll talk about it again. Additional 40% sales tax for infrastructure. We, the city of Lake City, as I understand it, have the sales tax at 8%. Most cities around here, eight and a quarter. I'm not saying we should rush just to be like everybody else, I don't care about that. But that is additional 40% of sales tax based on an election can yield about $3.3 million based on current values. That 3.3 can be parlayed on the market to $40 million, $50 million, who knows in lock programs? And it was paid by sales tax, it's not general obligation. And there's a, there's a portion, I don't know what it is, there's a portion of sales tax that we don't pay. It's the people that drive through the city every day to get, you know, bread and milk and eggs and whatever they get, or maybe those aren't charged, but whatever, other people pay for a portion of that. I'm not saying that's the reason to go with it, but quite frankly, it's a source that won't hit the tax rate, the property tax rate, and it's sitting there ready and they could help us out quite a bit. We could use that 3.3 million a year to buy down the 120. We could use it for a match, which frees up money to do something else. We could use it to direct it towards additional seat money or project money for Clear Creek or Dickinson Bay. There's all kinds of permutations of what can be done for that if in fact we want to use it as a tool. It's a legitimate option, okay, just in staff's opinion. And then last thing is course funding methods, general obligation, bond election and program. It requires a vote of the public. Now, there's not a person in this room or anyone of 105,000 plus or minus in the city right now that honestly and clearly know what the majority of the people want to do when it comes to fixing drains or dealing with range in the city of Lake City. We just don't know. Letting officials don't know. Y'all don't know, we staff doesn't know, but let's find out. One way to do that is to have the election. And if the majority says yes, we want to float 100 or offer up $120 million in bonds and address all 26 projects at a time based on priority, then that's what your staff will do because that's what we do professionally. We're happy to get that done. If the body model takes advice and says, no, we're not interested, well, then okay, that's an answer too. And then council knows, you know, and we know that we need to consider alternatives and frankly, alternatives are, projects get stretched. We have to work within the resources we have and, you know, other options have to come into play. So staff did a presentation at city council, October 23rd, I believe it was, in our workshop, in which we, you know, respectfully asked council to consider a potential bond election. And in that also touched on the course and sales tax. Now, there are two times in the year that cities in Texas can conduct elections. It's in May and November. Based on the phone calls and individual council members that receive, based on the phone calls that collectively they've received, based on the statements by citizens made in public forums and city council meetings, and based on the calls that we have received, there's a sense of urgency and the community is getting the action, the time for action. And so that's why staff is proposing, and that will be proposed, that we can, the city council will consider calling an election or a bond election for May 19, or May 4, 2019 as well as potentially a 40% sales tax election for that same date. Kind of a summary, but there's a bit more after that, so forgive me, but a summary, what are we doing, how are we addressing drainage challenges? Well, just I'm not going to say, these are the four things we talked about, okay? Number two, what drainage problems need to be addressed first? Well, that's again, that's structural first, non-structural second, the priorities based on the individual circumstances. Next one is, forgive me. What are the city's financing options? We just covered those. So what are the next steps for our city? Number one, continue to identify and pursue grant funding sources. Eagle Scouts on it, we're going to do it. We're going to go after them as hard as we can, get as much as we possibly can and leverage as far as we can. Number two, we're going to continue to enhance our drainage maintenance activities and programs. Number three, we're going to continue to review and update our development of drainage-related ordinances, especially taking into account the proposed NOAA numbers, when they've become for true and earnest and the FEMA finally says, hey, this is the map, you got to adopt it. We're going to continue to modify our ordinances and to bring it into good customer practice at today's time. Number four, we're going to continue our regional leadership efforts towards a unified, multi-jurisdictional agency approach for regional level project design and action. It has to be done like that in our opinion. Number five, we're going to ask, give you the ask, that letting officials consider and citizens consider accepting a May 2019 election for additional 40% sales tax for infrastructure. And I'm not talking about a course in sales tax or anything other than that, essentially for staff. It's infrastructure. It's not as if we could go out and build something outside of it, variable structure in that regard. And quite frankly, we could use the help. And then last thing, consider a May 2019 general obligation bond election program. Again, by May 19, why not kind of form committees and go through this process and create major seas and all these things and do it in November? That may be that, but there's a sense of urgency, quite frankly, between the 26 studies or 26 projects that have been done and the projects that rain research has been done prior to that. And frankly, the competition for grants, okay, versus with the most is in terms of applications, we feel like May is an appropriate timeframe, but we'll do whatever we're told. General obligation, what's to touch on for a second? There are project needs that generally have a large economic size and a long economic life. You know, pump stations, 50, you know, $3 million pump stations that pump 50,000 gallons per minute are designed to last for a long time and they cost a lot of money to begin with. So JGO bonds really match those well. It's property tax based? It's property tax based. So that means it's going to impact on the taxes you pay. But, you know, what drives peace of mind? You decide that as an individuals and as a, and as a collective. It's voted on by, voted on by the taxpayers, which we believe, again, is the cleanest and simplest way from moving council from the difficult position they're in of having disparate sides in this equation. Y'all too, as well as staff, let's just find out what people have to say what they want to do now. It's clearly, if it's passed, it's put forward and it's been passed, there is going to have an impact on the tax rate. But we will be directed by council, I can see the future, and staff will be held with that, I can see the future as well, to do our best to mitigate the impact of the taxes. There's no way that y'all stood up May 4th and said you got $120 million to go for, we're not going to sell the $120 million of the bonds and have a complete impact to that amount on the tax rate. We're going to ladder those bonds. We're going to sell those bonds at the right time for financing and sell those bonds for the right time for the projects. And additionally, stage the projects. We're going to move that prioritization system. And there may be some projects that frankly need to be done now. Maybe some projects need to be done now. There are other projects that maybe, quite frankly, based on periodicity and impact, could be delayed, still need to be addressed, could be delayed. In addition, there is, as we are the market of choice and people keep beating tracks to come here and buying homes, investing in businesses and those kinds of things, the existing property accrues value. There's an increment of that growth that could be swept off and used for reducing the amount of bonds towards debt service or otherwise, so that's, that's an option. And of course, the potential additional 40% sales tax can be used to lower the bond amounts and pay towards debt service. So we have a tentative schedule, I'm going to show you here in just a second as far as general obligation bond election. And I'm going to go ahead and throw in there, course and sales tax, these dates all basically, unless the city sector tells me wrong, these dates are all pretty much the same because a lot of it's cash toward the grid. But first thing I said, you know, guy here besides welcome, was input's important. Good input, if we go for a bond election, super important because there's going to be people that simply don't understand, people that are against it, people that support it. Just to make everybody understand what the impact is. We need your help. We need your help to develop a program that's successful for drainage, to address drainage challenges. Input, five town halls have been scheduled tentative, one is tonight. Telly town halls, telly town halls, as I understand it, and I am old, but as I understand it, that's where staff will be at the city hall. it, that's where staff will be at the city hall, will broadcast it through the cable. There's somebody in staff that knows how to do this, but what it will end up being is that it'll be kind of a real-time event where questions can be posed back and forth, and we can talk about it. So a very technical technique, quite frankly, as I understand. Facebook Live is another technology, or not the one we're going to use, you can word out. Eleven public meetings, one of which has already occurred on the twenty-third, one of which is occurring now. Here's the timeline. October twenty-third is the bond program workshop, the first series, the idea of the May of two thousand nineteen bond election. Town hall number one is tonight. We had a work session on the twenty-seventh to discuss the list of bond projects. Work session on the eleventh to discuss bond program projects. Every one of these workshops, or these discussions, or these bond program discussions, these town halls, are opportunities for you guys to come out and stand up and address the city council and staff. So every one of these are public input opportunities. January eighth, city council finalizes the list of bond programs as per our schedule. January tenth is the second, excuse me, is the second town hall. January twenty-seventh is the first reading to call the election, if that's what decisions have been made. February seventh is town hall number three, again, more bond program information, marketing, education, marketing, education, human aid. February twelfth is the second reading. The first and second are statutorily set, because February fifteenth is the absolute state law last day that election can be called, if we're going to have one in May. And if we miss May, we got no benefit, we got no benefit. But the first reading is the twenty-second, and one on the twelfth of February. Then two town halls after that, March seventh will be a bond program information. March, or April fourth will be number five, and then May fourth is the election day. Covered a lot of details, I talked pretty fast than I probably meant to and should have, but I'm going to say thank you for this chance to speak to you, and we're going to open up the panel for questions and comments, but Mr. Bond, I'm going to have something to say first.
So maybe kind of the first question I have is, can you give us a timeline a little bit as to how the grant programs are running? There's a deadline, there's a review process?
Chris, would you? Since Chris is doing the obligations.
So, so with, so with the Texas Subdivision of the Drainage Program, it's waves of projects that are released. My understanding right now is only one wave of projects have been released, and that was several months ago. They are reviewing projects now, anticipate something, maybe at the end of this year with another wave building through. When we submit projects, it's a two-step process. The first one, all twenty-six projects that we've submitted have passed the first step, and that's called a notice of intent. That's where you have the bare bones, guidance of a project. We think this is suitable, this needs to be done. FEMA takes a look at it, comes back and says, yes, we agree, we can now proceed to your application phase. The application phase, before we're out on all twenty-six, we've got, each application is probably somewhere in the neighborhood of about seventy pages of maps and cost estimates, so you're really starting to get in and get a, a good conceptual project with a fairly tight cost. You're submitting that in. Right now, all projects have to be submitted in. The website actually says November the twenty-third, but I was told this morning that it would be extended into January. So that's the absolute drop-in date.
And that's just the application process?
Just the application process. The applications then go through, from what I understand, a two-step process, a state review, and then a FEMA review. We have several that have been submitted that have been passed through the state review that are waiting on FEMA review, and then we have several that are under the state review right now.
And so there'll be a number of weeks or months, if competitive they score, drainage reported, a timeline established?
Yes, sir.
The second thing before we open up for questions, I'd like to, very nice county commissioner Ken Clark came in about fifty minutes ago, he's listened to the whole, the whole presentation, so with that, that's all I have before we open up.
Thank you. Questions please, if there's some standing by, please feel free to come forward. And who has the hand-held thing? There we go, tall gentleman in the back, my assistant, raise your hand, we're going to do it.
So if everybody not know me, my name is Marry, I'm from Florida, I'm in Marriage. I think most people on city staff and council know me. I have a couple of questions. I'm going to start with the fact that not much has happened. I know there's projects in the works, I know that we have filed the notice of intent, I don't know if we filed the actual applications yet. I know that there's been a little bit of work done on Dampio which has been counted. Are we doing anything in Lake City? Can we see anything that's been done? Because that's, that's the question that most residents ask, when will we see any action? And another question. I went to something called a flooding one. It was organized by the National Weather Services. They were talking about a gauge in D, in some bio that they got to borrow during Harvey. They are set by, the gauges come from US Coast Guard. They don't pay for them, someone has to pay for them. They put them in, and it measures the level in the bio. There's one in Clear Creek. It helps the National Weather Service to measure the level and predict how much flooding even happens. Well, they didn't get to keep it, because it's on level. Before it was removed, they did go out and ask the county and the cities if anybody wanted to pay for it. It's eight thousand dollars to have it installed, and fifteen thousand dollars a year maintenance. No one wanted to pay for it. So I wanted to know if Lake City got the question. If they didn't, maybe Lake City could say, hey, you can at least pay part of it. Because that would help predicting, and it would help our emergency services. Which leads me to the last thing. We have a neighbor in Marriage who is elderly, and she suffers from one, one big problem, her blood pressure. And it also is stress related. She couldn't come tonight because she was afraid that her blood pressure would rise so much that she would have to go to the hospital. Every time it rains and the streets flood, her blood pressure rises, the streets flood, she can't get out, an ambulance can't get in. That is incredibly sad. I know that our neighborhood is old, and I know that our drainage system is old and undersized to keep only nine inches on our streets. We really would like to see that addressed. Last one, I believe, thank you for taking care of all the new subdivisions that are going to be built, but that is not going to help us who already live here. Thank you.
I kind of went back to what you said. I think it was October twenty-fourth, again, about four and a half inches of rain, it's recorded by neighbors, rain gauge, and basically was, what I've noticed is, there's something else going in our ditch pond, somewhere, something has changed. And I think I talked about this last time I was up there, and this time I really saw it. I mean, it was four and a half inches, remember it was, the water was almost, probably about a foot over the curb. And I live right down from the park, right down from the city park, the water was up. Basically what happened was, what it looked like to me is, I went outside, it was raining, there was not that much water in the street, went back inside, came back out twenty or thirty minutes later, and there was water all the way in the street. It's like that pond's backing up, it's coming back, it's backfilling. And there's something, you know, if you look at our pond, we had culverts all over the area, okay? Is someone, was a culvert added when he was putting it in? Was the culvert added when South Shore was extended to six forty-six? You know, something's changed. And, you know, I've heard it, but that pond's been there forever. Head, the pond has been there forever. They was put in, maybe two thousand, two thousand? I mean, my neighbors still live, my neighbors say that pond was there before, remember it was open field? And I've been there since ninety-nine, and, you know, basically nothing ever happens. You know, everything was built higher, we're kind of like a backup ditch pond. It was like this two ponds there, and it was one pond, you know, when that pond fills up to there, our guards get to it. So, you know, I see what we're doing, I see all the pumps out there, you know, it's one of those things, but the last twenty-six shows up, I've got another pump over there. You know, I mean, it's, we, we, what we need is a lift station. We need a lift station, water, water. Instead of closing, pushing it, we need to push it out, or either that or figure out where that wash is. You know, something's changed. And that's all I can say.
Good.
My name is Carol Haney. My husband and I have lived in Lake City for fifty-three years. We have flooded four times, and very little gets done to help us. I would appreciate help. We live in a little subdivision of the Texas Avenue between Texas and the drainage retention ditches. We shouldn't have that problem, but we do. With a hard one-hour rain, we have flooded.
Appreciate you guys having the opportunity to come out tonight. I live in Glencoe, been there two years, as recently as the twenty-fourth, I took three and a half inches of water in my garage. That is the twelfth time in twenty-three months that my garage flooded. I called in, you know what I'm told? Everything meets spec, you're good, there's no reason you should flood. I've got video after video, I've got pictures on my phone from that night with an eight and a half inch water line on my house and my fence. Yet no one can tell me anything. All the neighbors on both sides both flooded. On the twenty-fourth, we all took three to three and a half inches to our garage. Talk is cheap. We all hear the talk, we all hear the talk of what we're going to do for everybody else going forward. Everybody sat here for an hour tonight and heard of what's going to happen to make everything better going forward. But no one's talking about the people that are here, the houses that are already here. Now, yes, there's projects that we're trying to get grants for, but when every time we get four inches of rain, I can breathe it in my garage, that doesn't sit well with me. Doesn't sit well with me at all, doesn't sit well with my neighbors. When I've got a running stream that comes into my backyard, and for a week, I have ponding water in my backyard. Something's got to change. Nobody ever even comes out to look. I have filed complaint after complaint after complaint. Why? What is it going to take for somebody to come out and actually look at Glencoe and say, yes, there's a problem? Yes, when we built the buildings up behind you guys on twenty ninety-four, it wasn't accounted for that that water was going to run into your yard. Yes, it should take more than four and a half inches of rain for your house to flood. Something's got to change, I just need to know what and when.
We appreciate it.
Perhaps a couple of responses before we continue to get questions. As it relates to Glencoe, somebody will have to be out this week, an address would be great, if you could let the everybody just know what your address is. As it relates to some of the Marrius comments, action, and that's why we're here tonight, you know, action, a lot of these projects, a lot of these solutions take a large amount of dollars, and so we're working to develop a consensus on how to pursue, and what's the right way to do that. Flood warning is incredibly important to us, part of our projects and part of our proposals is to establish some stream flood gauges throughout the community, so we have better information to work with as the events come forward. I think, I don't know, Mike.
On Marriage, you talked about the pumps, you talked about this here. You know, the project study that I know, I've seen, you know, you're right, talks cheap, I've said that a thousand times, I've said it a few times, but the reality is, is that the pumps, it takes, calculation wise, it'll take thirteen of those pumps to do what one fifty thousand GPM pump station will do. A pump station plus the levee improvements, plus the floodgates on the two roads that go, and the water flows across ninety-six, if that's what happens, are ten to fifteen million dollars. We don't have it. Okay, let's take it down to ten million dollars. We don't, it's, hey, there are solutions, we just don't have the funds for it. I mean, there are simple, we've talked about it, there are simple things you can do, and I've talked about it several seconds, you could, you could blow holes through the levees to get direct flow from those streets in, you could regrade those streets from that motor pump street from this side of the levee, you could resize the pipes. Because I don't know who said, was asking when the detention pond happened? I've seen plans, and there was never going to be a detention pond there. That was a phase of the project. That's why those roads deadhead into that levee, because after the fact, and that's why those pipes were designed to carry in the bigger pipe, in one of the bigger pipes I pursued, in the Gumbio, but it went straight into the, we had to come back up, into the detention pond. Let, let, okay. Please.
If you look at our, basically our gate valve, okay, our pond, well, that side is full of swamp, where the gate valve back, you see?
Most of that, we, we, that's, that's what I mentioned, we mentioned it too. And I'm not going to argue, but this ground is full.
I mean, I looked at it.
You look at the huge, that vertical side.
The gate valve is huge.
Yeah, it's thirty-six inch, right, Mr. Brown?
Yeah, it's thirty-six. Okay, but the pond is small, coming through there, it's not going to be a big extension.
That gate valve was designed to release at the rate that you can easily release the Gumbio, that caused me on screen, out. The best way to improve it, that the studies have shown, are the pump station, are regrading and recreating some of that storm rain. You know, it's not as if we don't know or don't care, it's just that show me, show me where the money is. I would be very happy to deal with projects, yes.
As it relates to Marriage, and Marriage in particular, there are a number of issues associated with the size of the storm shore that was put in as it was developed, we believe was developed according to the code at the time. So there are systemic issues within that that would lower street flooding. We've been through the system a couple of times, we were through the system, I think as recently as last week, we found debris from the storm, pileup at some of the throats, just past the throats of Eman, so we sucked that, and we sucked that out. We need eyes and ears too. We send people out there every time, every time it rains. If we use the water coming from the HEB side over the low room that exists there, that's important information for us to know, because we can impact that. We have seen that as we've gone out during the night of the four and a half inch rain, during all the rains in September. But those are things, if you in the community see that, take pictures of that, and then we can get that, some of those things we can get addressed fairly quickly.
Yes, I'm an insurance agent, I live over two seventy in Webster area, and we flooded during Harvey, of course. I've been on that property since nineteen eighty-five. That was the first time my house has flooded. I do believe it was caused by the subdivision that built behind our property, which was previously Woods. They were allowed to build a foot higher than my property, so I became the fishbowl. We've been talking to the cities about this off and on since two thousand and six, when that subdivision started, and basically, we were told, it's our problem to get the water to the road. I'm a hundred yards from the main road, on a private drive, and I spent a chunk of money putting in pumps and retention ponds on my own acre of property to try to alleviate the problem, and since Harvey, I have almost flooded three more times. Any hard rain, I'm walking through six to eight inches of water in my yard, and the last time it was less than two inches from my front door, yet again. And I'm tired, and I'm broke.
Thank you everyone for being here tonight. My name is Hank, you're one of your council members, and there's a lot of excuses about why things have not been done the best, there's a lot of excuses about why things can't be done today, but I'm here to tell you that we're trying to change. So, something that would be very helpful for me, and I think the rest of the council members here, what do you hear, if you're in support of the quarter cent sales tax for infrastructure, and if you're in support of the bond election for May, or if you prefer November? Or if you prefer us to go about these projects in a different way? But what I want to hear tonight is anything you want to share specifically is May bond election a good timeframe? And would you like us to include the course in sales tax election at the same time? So, I'm with you, there's a lot of excuses that have been given over the last twenty, thirty, forty years about why we can't stop flooding, why we can't reduce it. But we're trying to change the way things have been done the best. And what I would like to hear from you is, is May the timeframe, November the timeframe? And do we want the course in sales tax? Thank you for being here, share wherever you can with us. Specifically, those items are important. Thank you.
Just, Dave Bogan from Bay Ridge. Just as a follow-up on that, I think it would be helpful, I think Lake City should know total tax basis in the city with the new tax rates or property evaluations. I think it would be helpful if we could take that and basically say for a hundred and twenty million dollar bond, that equals ten cents per thousand, or whatever. So that rather than just quoting one hundred and twenty million, we can determine exactly what's coming out of our own pockets for approximately.
That's a, that's a, that's a great question. That's a great question, Dave. And we have done that analysis on, on just a hundred and twenty million dollar bond program. We've talked about how some streets are drainage. We've talked about libraries and public safety needs. I think what we've heard from the council is you need to downscale it just a little bit. So, probably look at drainage and transportation, those are the two number one issues we hear from the community. Thinking in the two hundred million dollar range, that may be a little high still. We would think that there's a lot of factors that go into estimating that. How long is the program? What's the inflation rate? What's the interest rate? Interest rates are going up. And we believe that you could structure the debt issuances and probably have an impact between six and ten cents on the tax rate to mitigate that with the course of sales taxes, which are probably closer to three to six instead of six to ten. But again, a lot of different pieces that ultimately depend on how big that is. If it's just a hundred and twenty million dollars, then you quit issuing debt that you issued today. You know, maybe it's, any of them would say six to ten cents, or three to six cents, or something like that. Mine will be issued over the course of, you know, from one to, well, not less than a year, but five to seven years. It should be a penny one year, it could be a penny the next year. Sales tax starts to kick in, because if sales tax has some inflation proof to it, as time goes by, it's hit three point three million, maybe it's four point four, four point five. And so, it fluctuates a little bit. If you structure, if you structure it correctly, you probably can stay under a nickel. Again, that may be a penny a year over the course of five years or six or seven years. And so, what we would do as staff, and I mean, we can't speak for the council, but I think what the council would do is you look at debt issuance, what's your inflationary growth rate? Can you maintain the same, you know, the same tax rate? Mind, you know, everybody knows the values go up every year, so maybe it doesn't make any tax increase once a year because the value went up and out. But you capture more of the revenue because of the inflationary, the houses, so I mean, that's probably six to ten cents is an order of magnitude. At worst case, based on, again, a higher end number to a hundred millionish, you scale that back. Those numbers go down, again, the course of sales tax, so you can do that. We think the course of sales tax is a good tool to mitigate any tax increase. And over the course of the next few months, our goal is to refine those numbers and again, help inform the public of some of the options that are out there. So appreciate your comments.
Hello, I'm Chris, I live in Clear Creek Village. I've been here through Allison, pretty much, for twenty years I've been in the neighborhood. And when Allison came through the neighborhood, we flooded twenty-three homes. When I came through, we flooded about forty-five homes. And when we got Harvey, we flooded a hundred and forty-two homes, which is half our neighborhood. The highest level was eight foot in a house. And there's excellent footage on channel eleven of what I forty-five did to dam up Clear Creek. It was very good. Hopefully, the text doc will do more. I know they're elevating it and gonna make a bigger hole. But one of the things I've noticed and also has contributed to our flooding is that the developers that purchased the property along Clear Creek have gone in in certain neighborhoods, and there's been as much as fourteen to fifteen foot filter put in. And if you look on the east side of Clear Creek, where it used to be all floodplain, right, the area, pretty much right at the bridge, they went in there and that elevation was raised anywhere between six to, again, fourteen feet. And that whole area, that used to be floodplain. They used to take in a lot of water. Plus, with the new standards that have been put in place, for new neighborhoods have to have nine inches of water in the, in the streets. Any old neighborhood that had twenty-four, that other sixteen inches that is not in that neighborhood is gonna go to the low lying areas, which is the old neighborhoods. So you just immediately increased or potentially increased the sixteen inch rise in every old neighborhood. So, the only floodplain that's going to work, and my numbers might be not excellent because I'm just doing it in my head, I'm kinda thinking here. But, being a floodplain, being a coastal city, which the title affects our flooding, which it does, during Harvey, on Clear Creek, I mean, on Clay Barn, the street I live on, there's never been water in front of my house ever since nineteen sixty-four, according to all the residents. We had about, we had about fourteen inches of water at the crest of the street. And I could watch the tidal surf, I could watch the in and out flowing tide at my street. That meant all the drains and all the drainage in the neighborhood was backfilling into the neighborhood off the tide. Pretty much, plus the other flooding that was going on. Now, I know a lot of residents don't wanna hear this, but there's only one floodplain that's gonna work and continue to let builders build and fill in all the low lying areas. You're gonna let us all flood enough times that we have to have our houses bought out. And then once we buy it out, the land's empty, you can sell it to the developer, which is gonna raise the property up to the nine inches of the new rules. And then you're gonna build your houses on it. That's the one thing that's gonna fix it. Because you, you're an entitled community, how in the world are you gonna drain? When you're trying to push it into a, into the creek, which is higher than where you're at? It just doesn't go there. And you know how many inches of water? One inch's arise out in the bay, or one inch arise out there contributes to how much of the backfill flooding that you're talking about contributing to. So, irregardless of how much money we throw at this, and if the developers would build it at the same twenty-four inch level that all the rest of the city is at, those, those are going to absorb that twenty-four inches of water in all of their streets, like everybody else does. And it's not gonna contribute to the extra flooding in the low lying neighborhoods. Because they would then take on more water, and that water would be dispersed over larger area, and you'd have more body. Yes, it's a huge retention pond. But when you raise it up to where you say they have to be, whatever it is, twenty, whatever you set for the floor line, and nine inches of the street, you just put as much, or could have put just as much as sixteen extra inches of flooding in every neighborhood this low lying with it. And if you let them fill in all of the areas along the creek and any other area and raise that elevation up, it's just like, you know, you come into this room, you pour a glass of water on the floor, you don't notice it. But if I go in here and I fill all of this up six inches, and I pour that glass of water, and we spot the tide, the level is much higher. That's what's going on. There's no amount of money we're gonna throw at this to fix that unless we stop raising up all the land that used to hold floodwater. Here's a, because we don't want a title community. The tide is going to affect us all the time. So, that's, I mean, that's really the answer. Buy our houses out, let a new developer build it, build it up. Problem solved for a while.
Good evening, my name is Harold, I live in Center Point. We've lived here for about sixteen years. And fortunately, we didn't flood during Harvey because we have two very old retention ponds. But what we're concerned about is this new development that you guys are planning south of us, north and south of ninety-six, east of the freeway. When I looked at the proposed plan, it appears there's two small retention ponds. It's always on that block later. There's four hotels, and I don't remember how many parking lots and apartments. That has to affect what's about to happen in our subdivision, just like some of these other folks in the other subdivisions, which I'm sure will probably affect yours. And the gentleman that just finished it more than correct, if you keep building it up, it's gotta go somewhere. And I've been failing down here since nineteen sixty-four, and I've watched all this. So, if you guys just continue this buildup and allowing all these things to be built, especially for what I'm concerned about is south of us, there on both sides of ninety-six, that grand development, where it's now mostly ball fields, that's gonna be concrete. This is not gonna work. Okay, and the only, the only thing I've heard here tonight is we're raising the old standards, and gonna put out more taxes. Not gonna work. You're gonna have people failing out of this community like you've never seen it if you keep this up.
My suggestion is to have a moratorium on new development until we can get a handle on the existing homes and businesses, the drainage problem, because you're gonna drag the rest of us out. You don't have a bunch of new people coming in here, but you're gonna lose a bunch of us some of the time. That's all I have to say.
Question about the twenty-six projects that are being proposed. Are those projects designed such to adhere to the new standards that are being proposed? Or is that the existing standards? The existing standards, it seems to be that some of those, all of them can obsolet to the new standards. And would it make sense to spend that money on something that's gonna get redone?
Uh, yes, sir, they're, they're being designed to the new standards.
Chuck Falcon, Rick and May. I'm interested to know if you're looking at increasing the capacity of existing detention ponds in existing neighborhoods? And if not, why not?
Yes and no. We're looking at increasing ditches where needed and stuff like that. We're looking at certain areas where there is not detention now, adding detention. As far as going in and looking at every specific detention pond?
They can be deeper, wider, whatever, because of the ones that are parked right now.
Not every one of them, no. We're looking at what we found with the two, our modeling community reports to determine what need to be done in the detention ponds themselves.
We're looking at increasing the capacity of any existing detention ponds.
So, absolutely, so the Bay Ridge populations and the, but it's a balance. We've got the ground water tables, we've got the all kinds of situations involved, but yes, I'm a little interested in that one.
So, for example, in Benson's Bayou, which is on the east side of I forty-five, we're not going to ahead making detention ponds bigger, but we're adding detention ponds adjacent to Benson's Bayou. And that's, the answer to that question is yes. But not, not permanent detention, but just adding more detention within that basin.
Ed Parsons, I'm with the folks at Clear Creek subdivision. I've been here about eighteen years. Came here once before when we had a meeting specific to our neighborhood. I have to say, it's interesting to hear people from all the different neighborhoods now talking about similar sentiments that I've had since that meeting. So I was here, you know, for eighteen years I've been here. Rowelson, Light, a couple other flooded events. They mostly flooded the front road of our subdivision close to Route Three. Route Three is higher than Light in our subdivision, it appears. I was surprised to find out that that little ditch alongside of Route Three is some kind of bayou that's supposed to be a major overland drainage for our area. You look at it, it just kinda sits there, the water enters it, doesn't like, even look like it's flowing. You look at the size of the drainage inside of that ditch, it runs along Route Three. I mean, I was, I thought that was just for Route Three. I didn't think that had anything to do with our actual subdivision. Found out at the last meeting that our, that our underground drainage was improper to current code and goes north when our overland goes south. Our whole subdivision sits lower than ninety-six now also. And, you know, I'd want people to express here, and it was a nice comment by, by the gentleman from Center Point, that he's looking at what's going on. And, you know, he can't prove it through math here, right here, exactly. But, we add more concrete, more buildings all around you, and your pipes are smaller and don't hold as much. In our case, we don't even have a perp extension area. And when Center Point went in, you know, I, that was a question in my mind at the time. And when I was here last, I was told by the modeling folks and the engineers that, oh, that's okay, that was addressed when, when it was designed, because there's a metering effect that we're required to design to, and that's what's accounted for, so that really shouldn't impact you. Well, you know what? I'm gonna, I'm gonna have to challenge that. Who has gone out and taken the modeling and actually put in flow meters and verified it? Has anyone done that? Has anyone gone out and verified this theoretical metering when everyone builds everywhere all around you? Puts in huge ranges that supposedly need small little ditches and pipes from older areas? And actually verifies that this design area was met? Has that ever been done? And if not, why not? Is it because it's not required? Or, I mean, you could put a flow meter where three things come together, upstream, downstream, and on the entrances, and see if it's actually working. Is that a possibility?
It is something that can be looked at for sure. It is not a routine practice. It is something that is done.
Yeah, well, like maybe when you're having widespread regional flooding issues. So, so, I'm not trying to be smart, but I mean, I think it is warranted when you have something like that. So, you know, it just seems so, you know, when your gut is telling you, if you've been here a lot, you know, then you've been looking around, the amount of expansion of Lake City that's gone on. You know, ninety-six used to be Lake Road when I moved, and it was a little tiny little thing. I don't think it even had a strike down the middle of it. But, you know, now you look at that and all the subdivision development that's gone on south of, of, you know, the new south shore subdivisions and, you know, subdivisions all around us, you know, Victory Lakes and Center Point. And, you know, everybody's got a right to do what they, what's within the law. But I guess what I, what I keep hearing, and the councilmen was up here earlier saying, yeah, they recognize kind of excuses are here and there. I, I keep hearing, I don't, what I don't hear is an acceptance of responsibility for the, for the rapid expansion and the impacts on all people who keep repeatedly flooding, or even have flooded once. And see that every time now when it rains, like a lot of people have said, there's something different. And I'm saying it again, I'm agreeing with these people. I see, we, the other night, whenever that was, October twenty-something, we got, I don't know how many inches in our area, we were out at the store when it started. Within two hours of that, by the time we went to Home Depot, by the way, we're still putting our house back, we're at Home Depot, we go to grab us something to eat and come home. We're driving through water on our streets and it's coming up the other. And we're going, oh, man. You know, you're walking, you're coming home, but stuff from Home Depot is still trying to fix the house, and the road's coming up on, onto grass, for water, it's coming up on grass. And it's like, that didn't used to happen, not just from one night, several inch rain event. So something definitely is different. And, you know, I think it's from all the rapid expansion. Can anything be done about the past? People who've built projects with regards to their responsibilities to meet drainage requirements? With regards to going and looking at their responsibilities contractually and seeing if, if anything can be done to, if you do verify that they didn't need it? Can, can they be, you know, required or sued to do something to help the problem? I agree with, more to my wife, I don't agree with her, but, I do. I think when you communicate, you know, and I realize, you know, that the reality is, some of these things are gonna, it's a complex issue, so it's not gonna be one answer. It'll be multiple answers, multiple fronts, hopefully look for it. And I see you guys are trying to do that, and I appreciate that, multiple fronts, approach. I do think more responsibility for what has gone on and thinking about somehow connecting our citizenry gut feeling on what's been going on around here with projects and who took responsibility for making sure the drainage... responsibility for making sure the drainage that's going on for the new project actually meets the requirement. I think when you communicate the bond, it sounds like the grants, we won't know, it sounds like we will not have answered on grants before the bond might come up in May. So, if we're going to do that, someone mentioned it, you know, put it in terms of, there needs to be a really good communication, a project associated with this, because if you're sitting in an area that has never flooded and you're happy, your drainage has worked well, you know, no one wants to get attacked. So, you know, they're thinking, well, why, why you paying for that, or otherwise, it's a city thing themselves, you know? So, there's a lot, going to be a lot of different people's views on this issue, and I think in how you communicate it in terms of, we're all in the same boat here, you know, because you could be the next one, just like the gentleman at Center Point's like, looking, looking, saying, well, we did it last time, but now what they're doing up here. So, I think it's a multi-pronged approach, more, maybe more touring, but also looking at verification of the design criteria, was it met or not, and all this new construction that's been going on for years, and what did it really do to us? I think the console wasn't an answer. And then I think really good communication regarding, you know, getting people to blow out their pocketbooks, because I think we are, we are all citizens of Lake City, and I think we all need to bolster each other, but there's something this serious, that this is really, really becoming a serious issue. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Mary Ellen Coleman, and I live on Ellis Road. And I came in here, I was pretty optimistic that there was going to be some solutions. I'm not a rocket scientist, but I do understand the reality and the big expansion of Lake City that will continue to go on, and projected that will happen. I'm wondering if maybe the solution is for those of us at the older homes to surrender to the medical and go to an agency to buy it out, since how many more floods do we need to go through? So, what agency would do we go to to request a buyout?
Yeah, I don't know if I can answer that. It's a federal program, if I can get your name and number on it. Did you sign in? What was your name?
Mary Ellen Coleman, K U H L N H.
We'll go back to Mary.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Nazar Wathil, I live in Center Point subdivision. I'd like to thank you all for doing excellent work, but what I've heard so far are really good plans for what you've done, or I'm not doing, but everything that I've heard so far are the cures for the problems that we already have. I have not heard anything so far, uncorrectly if I'm wrong, that we can prevent something. Why are we here? How did we get here? How can we prevent? One of the things I've heard far is the new construction that is pushing all the water that is being made at a higher elevation and, you know, putting all the older residents in trouble. What are you doing, or what do you plan to do to stop the new construction that is being made at a higher level? Because it is just adding to the problems and will be just chasing on tables, throwing money, because every time somebody builds something at a higher level, somebody else gets into trouble. So, are you going to stop? Are you going to do something about preventing these problems in the first place? That's my first point. The other point is, yes, nothing is free. If you want to fix all this, you've got to pay for it, that's the next point that you brought up. Maybe you can give us numbers that will say, okay, if you have this much budget extra from what we already have the revenue, if you have 50 million or 100 million, we can do this, these projects. And that could be arranged by other sales tax or bond or property tax, whichever way you want to put it, and let people decide how much they want to pay for it, and how much, how much you can do so we can come to some conclusion as to what can be done and what we're willing to pay. Those are the two points. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Hi, I'm William Cantal, I also live in Center Point. I guess one of the things I would suggest would be to increase the timing of your 2D modeling, to put that higher in your to-do list. If you don't have the model complete and it doesn't have the proper resolution, you won't know really which projects to fund, which ones to do first, how they're going to impact each other on downwind. Probably you'll need to do the whole 53 square miles so that you have a better understanding. I'm curious if commercial properties are going to be required to meet the same codes as residential, or they'll be held to maybe a higher standard to make sure that they have adequate detention for all the parking lots that they're going to put in. Want to make sure that if you pass these bond issues, that therefore, infrastructure, the money doesn't get funneled off to be used for something else that comes up, kind of like the lottery. It was supposed to go to the schools, it doesn't always go to the schools. And I'm also curious who's going to manage these projects. Not that the Calder Street project didn't go well, but it'd be good to have somebody in charge of the projects that actually could see through fruition.
Thanks. Before we lose all the crowd, councilmember Dubey asked generally if there was a sales tax for infrastructure to support drainage program, anthropology, and bigger in... So, let me ask the question the other way. Maybe it's not terrorism, people in our... How many would not be supported using sales tax?
Sales tax went to the drainage, and that's not to, you know, humane society, we can take that.
Are you talking about additional sales tax, or what?
So, yeah, so today the city has a sales tax rate. Well, the city and the state combined is 8%. City's 1.75%. The city's allowed by a vote of the public to add another quarter cent to the sales tax, so it would be eight and a quarter instead of 8%. That quarter cent of sales tax in our community today generates about $3.3 million of additional revenue a year that could be used to help offset the expense of issuing new debt for applying directed projects. And then that, that sales tax amount actually grows over the course, it's growing at the current rate of 5% to 7% a year, grows pretty significantly from year to year. And so, again, at the end of 10 years, it may be closer to four, four and a half million. I'm making numbers up, and Angie's just cringing over there because she didn't give me her spreadsheet. So, again, it is just a method in lieu of property taxes to help offset some of the expenses associated with the projects issued with debt.
When we go buy something, we... What's the, or we try to, right, we have...
What Maria suggested is that most, most every, most every city around us is currently at eight, most every city in Texas is 8 and 1/4%. We're one of the few that is only 8, 8%. So, if you shop in Webster, or you go to Keema to eat, or anything like that, you're paying 8 and 1/4% in those communities. Likewise, people that come here to eat or to shop or do that kind of thing are only paying 8%. Does a quarter cent make a difference on where you choose to shop? Not necessarily. But the point, two points is, one, there are folks outside the community that would help support that payment taxes. Number two, you know, people like to think the sales tax is discretionary, so if you don't like, if you don't spend money, you don't have to pay it, not that you still have to buy something, so it's not 100% discretionary, but there's more choice involved with that than the property tax base.
A lot of people need to, that the tax, the detention bonds, what...
It would, it would happen, if, I don't know if there's a way to do it purely and simply, but it's how you structure what that tax can go to. Does it just go to general fund offset, or does it, does it just go to roads and drainage? And I'm, and I'm not an expert as I sit here, but I understand that the question is concerned. I think we heard it from a few...
I... Great.
For COVID, then I'd like to know that it was going to the roads and drainage, not to all the other, oh, I want, I want, I want.
Sure.
To the roads and drainage.
That would be a...
Sure. Right up.
Can I hear?
Ryan, Ryan.
Yeah, like councilmember Middleton saying, when these people are speaking, the rest of the audience cannot hear.
This gentleman raised his hand, but I don't have a voice. But I agree.
I just wanted to use that as a segue to reemphasize what I was talking about, about how you communicate this, because for something to pass, that's immediately a question that a lot of people are asking. How do we know, how can we trust that it will be properly tagged to be used for those things, and not 10 years later, we have no idea where to take it land?
It's, it's how, it's how the initiative is drafted, and, you know, there are certain things we can do with sales tax, obviously. General obligation bonds are more specific, they're specifically for drainage or specifically for transportation. There are some limitations on sales tax with the initiative, we can say we need to evaluate that before we bring forward certain initiatives, and everybody was asking. I'm sorry, Amy, can I continue with the questions? Problems?
I live in Death Meadows, it's a neighborhood that hasn't been mentioned, a lot of like them, we flooded as well. We have now become a fishbowl for everyone around this Bay Colony, and part supportive of it, which is a neighborhood in Dickinson. My biggest question for you guys is, I know that you mentioned there's 26 projects that you guys have applied for. Where do we find out what those projects are, and which neighborhoods are in those projects? And also, where, you know, when will you find out the results for the drainage studies that you guys have helped on?
So, we have one other public meeting for the Bay Colony area in general, and I'm sorry, the date has escaped me, but it's, it's this month, I believe it's the 29th through 27th, something, something like that. Or we can go over the projects specific to that area, what we've been doing in previous projects, our previous public meetings for those areas, to talk about what the studies were, what was found, and really use that time to make sure the data we have matched what people saw.
And is Death Meadows in?
Death Meadows is in that area.
Yeah, I was going to say, because we are not a colony.
No, I didn't mean that, but it's the Bay Colony area, that larger area.
Okay. And then I also know that in Death Meadows, we actually have two compostations in our neighborhood, one in the front and one in the back. I believe they're compostation, they're not...
They're for sanitary sewer? Yes, sir.
Okay. How do we find out what the maintenance is on that? Even though communication, you know, there's still something going through there, it's to the point where we never flooded, and I mean, when I bought that house in 2011, we had never had an issue with flooding. After Harvey, there are days, I'm a school teacher, I can't even make it too cold or when leaving the neighborhood, because the front of our neighborhood gets so high that it goes up halfway to our neighbor's yard. Luckily for us, we are in the very back of the neighborhood, so we don't get nearly as much water as they do. But it's become a problem whenever you're trying to leave for work and you can't get past halfway through the neighborhood because the water has risen so much. Like, and we have no retention ponds around us. However, I know that the city does own property by us, but there's nothing there. And I know that you mentioned with one of the other gentlemen, was that there is some maintenance for retention and some for maintenance and some not? Is that this Death Meadows neighborhood act may be getting some kind of retention?
Yes, Death Meadows, World Project Calculations is a detention bond on the east side of Death Meadows, on the land, I believe, or something like that. Which one of the several solutions, and then it'll be presented in that study.
Okay. I speak to you.
And then as it relates to the flooding in the front, we received that complaint probably a few times over the last couple of months. I know the maintenance department went in and they regraded the roadside ditches, helped direct water towards I-17 in the area drains, and so, I don't know, was that done three weeks ago?
That was probably done...
Four or six weeks ago, and I've, and I've heard that made some improvement, but we'll continue to monitor that.
Have you been able to see it? Okay. Because it's not that, it's not that detailed, and I will, and I will be honest and say, it didn't even go all the way to where it needed to go. We had neighbors out there with shovels going further into Death Meadows.
Digging to the...
Digging into...
We saw some of that. Part of the problem with digging it as deep as we possibly can, it's set by whatever the flow line, whatever the elevation is and where it goes in underground, that kind of sets it, is if you make it deeper, then the water's going to stay in. So, because the federal problem is it's flat.
Right.
We can't work on it, but your observation is right, we saw some hand digging.
Okay. And then as well with our gutters, how, who maintains those? I mean, because when my husband and my neighbor are constantly going out after every rain to clean them out, that's a problem for us. That's one, it's a health risk, because we don't know what's there, but how do we get that maintained?
Let me, let me have you communicate with Jody Hoops, who's our public works director, and he'll make contact with you when you're in. Can I ask any questions?
Okay.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's John Diggan. I am a resident of Dickinson. I have several concerns. I believe some people have already mentioned, you know, all the new construction that's going in, and they're in an area where at one point they either did flood or flooding was minimal. Now, with all the construction that's going in, that's being planned, Grand Parkway, further on down, during Harvey, I had water up to here inside my home. My concern is, all of this water, you are talking about controlling all of it, but the thing is, the water's still going to be coming down. It's going to make its way to Dickinson Bayou. You have all this construction that's over here that's going on right by where Marie lives. All of that stuff's going in, and as far as what we've seen as residents in Dickinson, that water's going to continue to be pushed into Dickinson Bayou. I understand that there's storm surge, and it causes basically the bayou to back up, but there's a lot of construction that's going in, and as a resident of Dickinson, I'm concerned, because it's one thing to say that I've had it up to here, but it's another thing to say that all this construction is going to make the water be up to here in my house. So, I want to know what's going to be done about that.
Mr. Diggan, I've heard of your plans that you say that you're going to look forward, and these bonds and things like this that are going into effect, and the sales taxes that are going to go up. Stop. I would, I call you, we're here talking about flooding and a solution to, you know, make this water go somewhere else. Well, I don't think it's going to go anywhere else. And I would like for all of you to think about something else, a little something different. And the water of where it's going to go, it's not going anywhere. Who prospers when there is a flood? Think about it. Stores, contractors, all of it, who flooded prospers? I think we need to follow the money trail. These homes have flooded four, five, six times. You know, Dowson was flooded, I think it's the same since Harvey. This man's, his garage has been flooded for years and years, and they kept saying they would do something, and they didn't. And now we have more plans, and I really don't see it. I'm sorry, but I just really don't, because more... and I really don't see it. I'm sorry, but I just really don't. Because more buildings are going to be built. There's gonna be more asphalt, more concrete. And when that happens, the heat index, all right, is that gonna go up? Is our electrical bills gonna go up? Oh, they're gonna like that. We're gonna be paying more for their electric bills. And, you know, there, budgets are gonna go up. All these people prosper. Think about it. Okay? I've been trying to have, my, my street did not flood apart. And now with this regular rain, I have to check it every hour. I have to go out there and check my street. In September, I told my daughter, she's, she's disabled, I said, pack your suitcase, we're going to watch out. The street is, is like, just a few feet together, it's gonna be flooded. And so we went to a hotel several, several days. It's, it's, it's very traumatic to be in your home and one for, you have to keep watching. Are you, are you gonna be, you don't want to have to get in that boat again if you're rescued. Over there, I think it's called Davis, baseball field. They said that it's gonna be transferred somewhere else. It's gonna be put somewhere else, that baseball field, those kids. And a building's gonna be erected there. And it's gonna be, you know, a real, a nice restaurant, you know, a real, you know, it's gonna be, you know, very, you know, quiet dinner. That's what the, you know, the letter that went out to all of us.